Well, I thought we were recording.
Said so.
Oh.
Okay.
Now we got it.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Planet Commission to order. We're meeting at fifteen hundred Highway two, San Point, Idaho, first floor. And it's four thirty-four. And the first item of business is the Pledge of Legions. Could all stand? Yeah, the role, please, starting at the set.
Crayton.
Later.
Commissioner Songstad, Mr. Davis.
Commissioner Lynn Scott.
All right, we have a quorum, even though we're missing a couple commissioners. Any announcements, Mr. about?
So Commissioner Ahmet was in contact last week. He went to a conference, I think down in Boise. He's in contact with a member of the IMHA or the Idaho Manufactured Home Association, I think is what it is. Want to say her name is Dana, but I could be incorrect. So she's requesting to have an opportunity to meet with the Planning Commission. I'd invite the board as well. When looking in where I spoke with her earlier today and got a schedule and figure out when it could best meet for her, it sounds like it's going to be at least an hour to an hour and a half. So I'd say let's not, let's not add it to our normal meeting agenda. But if we can hold a midday or mid-afternoon meeting as a workshop only and just receiving information. I forwarded her all of our regulations and all of our ordinances regarding mobile homes, RVs, RV parks and whatnot for her to consider before presenting to the Planning Commission. So her availability is October fifteenth through around the twenty-seventh or November first or second, and there would be an in-person, she'd be here to present, so.
October fifteenth is not a Sunday? Well.
Or the week of, I think, the week of the fifteenth. So the last two weeks of this month are up till the second of November. After that, she'll be gone.
So our meeting is on the seventeenth?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I think when looking at the calendar, the afternoon of October nineteenth looks like it would be available. I think that's a Thursday. I think there might be a zoning commission meeting that day. Is that right?
How about if we did it? How if we did it before our meeting?
Oh, on the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Sure. So we want to schedule for like three o'clock or three thirty?
Yeah, does that work?
That works for everybody. Okay, that that works for me, I believe. And then she also wants to send the invite out to local cities to attend as well. So they're planning our zoning commission. So if we get quorums of them, we'll let them notice it and agendize it their way. And I'll let the board know and if we get a. Oh, oh, yeah, that will be done. This on a Tuesday. Okay, that works for me. Again, it's just going to be a workshop to receive information around the manufactured homes in association throughout the state. So, cool. All right. And then I was also in contact with treading it data from Panhandle Health and our local reps would like to meet with us on the seventeenth. And I told them I could put them at the beginning of the agenda, talking about public services. So that component, as we update it, Catherine had a number of things she wanted to present to the board in like a workshop format as we worked through this component. So I told her we could add her to the beginning of that.
In the context of that component?
Correct. Yep. When when talking specifically about public services, mostly on like what's PhD's role in shared services, so shared septic systems. So we use that to establish density in certain zones. So she wanted to have a discussion about that.
Maybe we should send her a draft of what we've got.
I can do that. So I can give her a couple of weeks to review it. Because she has reviewed the previous or the current adopted comp plan, but I haven't sent her our current draft yet. I wanted to get to a little bit more. I know we've only reviewed it preliminarily since I made the majority of the changes. So well, after we get done with our draft tonight and you guys give me a feedback on it, I can give her the updated draft.
Okay, yeah, it sounds good.
That being said, take a look at, we have the, I put it on today's date, so the ten-two draft version. The version three, I've created a version four, that's for next meeting, and I'll make those changes tonight. So as you guys reviewing it, look at version three of that.
Same thing with the services?
Yes, some public services. And that's updated as of today with some additional details that Mr. Lynn Scott gave me. And then same thing with the short-term rental ordinance. There was a today's date version, and I created a seventeenth version in case we workshop it again in two weeks, and I can make some more changes to it. So.
That's all the the draft, the public services component that was on our website earlier today was difficult to download.
I couldn't over there at all.
Me neither.
They don't have permission after a legal doc.
Yeah, I just right now I tried to.
Really?
Yeah, this file is too large. Yeah, it says it's too large or something. I don't understand.
Oh, can you download it?
Are you saying the version three?
I was able to download it, but I wasn't able to download them, the figures, the maps and stuff.
Oh, there are a lot of figures in there and a lot of maps.
I think that must be what's throwing it off. So we might have to figure out something else, but hopefully we'll be able to see it tonight.
I could open it in a PDF format. Maybe that'll be easier. It'll consolidate.
I think PDF format would work.
So I'll do that real quick as you guys go through.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't want to open on this computer.
All right, we're gonna move to the consent calendar, which is September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three planning minutes. Any objections, any changes, corrections? Hearing none, I declare that the minutes are approved, and we'll move to the first workshop item, which is the vacation rental permit ordinance review.
I'm converting this large PDF, so in your G drive, there's the current draft that includes the changes you requested last meeting. I also sat down with Bill and wanted to get a legal review as to the two main conflicting arguments of how do we regulate a bedroom, if at all, and then the whole idea of perjury and adding that as a penalty of perjury. And he gave a legal review. I got it an hour ago and uploaded it within the last hour. So if you want, I can share that on the screen and we can look at it together, or each of you guys can pull it up.
Yeah, that's good. Let's do that.
So here's Bill's review. He does have some concerns about regulating what happens inside of a building. You want me to read it or refine?
Well, I can stand.
What's that?
No, I want to read this.
Everybody had a chance to read it?
If you want to refer back to it again, it's in your meeting documents under the short-term rental, it says a legal response to.
Oh, yeah.
Doordens.
Well. With all due respect to Bill, I don't agree. First of all, nobody, no inspector is going to have to go out and inspect the interior of the building or the residence to see where there's that it complies with the definition. You just need to certify, and I don't see the reason why it can't be under penalty of perjury. Not to certify that whatever bedrooms you have complies with the definition. And essentially what that is, is it's a method of calculating occupancy. So we're not going out to check and see whether there's actually agress window that's that's built to the twenty eighteen International Fire Code standards. What we're asking them to do is to say, this is a bedroom. How many of these do you have? And that's the occupancy. So I mean, we're not going to be sending people out to inspect that. We're going to take people's word for it. And I really don't understand his argument with regard to penalty of perjury. I don't get that at all. Doesn't make any sense to me. So you're asking, you're asking, they're asking for for permission, they're asking for a permit from the county based upon their representation that their property meets certain requirements, and therefore they're going to get a permit. If if they if they are accurate, then they have no problem. If they're fudging, well, then they're going to have a problem, and they should have a problem. Because we're relying on it.
Is this, Mr. Chair, is this open now for the board discussion?
Why not?
I'm asking a question. Yes.
It's a workshop.
So my comment would be that prosecuting attorney here works in conjunction and for the protection of the county commissioners, which will will ultimately make this decision. And I would feel it would be difficult for me to, knowing what his legal opinion is, and I'm sure you can find different legal opinions. I mean, that's why we have attorneys, I guess, but I would say, and I've expressed this before, that we have a document here that uses a basis for determining the number of occupants. They really can't be by this letter enforced or defined, again, because the county itself being the size of this is without a building department and therefore this becomes very problematic. And I think could lead to future difficulties, so I'm not sure what the answer is. We had some alternatives the last time about the size of the structure, which is easily definable. And just say it's so many people per square feet or whatever, and then add a number if you want to give comfort, but making it specifically linked to quote-unquote bedrooms that cannot be enforced or defined actually is problematic.
Well, let's define. That's a room containing four walls, a door, and an egress window. That's how it's defined.
So if the rationale.
That's what's in the draft.
I made my comments, Mr. Chair.
To me, if the rationale behind getting a short-term rental software was so that we could have a ordinance that's enforceable to then turn around and create an ordinance that we can't enforce seems illogical. So.
Why is it not? I don't understand. Why is it not enforceable? All you're doing is saying, look, this is the, this is the amount of people you can have at your, at your rental. And it's based upon the number of bedrooms, which is not inconsistent with, as we've seen, many, many other short-term rental ordinances around the state. They they use bedrooms as a, as a determining factor in occupancy limits. I don't understand why we can't enforce that.
It it's the the idea that we don't have a building code to rely on.
And that's what, I don't understand what, I I guess I'm not following it.
There there's there's liability when the county signs off on a use of a structure, given the definitions that we have. And let's say, we say, yes, this is what a bedroom is, and you would say, yes, this is what we have. And then all of a sudden, there's a fire in the building. Someone dies and the county signed off on that being a short-term rental. Like we have, then we have a liability that the structure was made to a certain standard that we didn't verify.
No, they're saying, no, that's just not true. I mean, all we're doing is saying, look, this is, this is our definition of a bedroom. Do you comply with that? And if you do, then you can have so many occupants in there. We're not saying that it complies. Which is another reason why we should have them certify under penalty of perjury that this in fact is the case.
I I can just tell you that Bill's never going to prosecute somebody that violates the penalty of perjury. He's not going to take someone to prison over lying.
Well, I've seen Bill's not going to prosecute anybody for anything. So that doesn't really carry much weight, but.
What, I don't know that this planning commission has the authority to legislate or to declare what is a bedroom and what defines a bedroom. That is a a building code matter that that or an accounting matter that, and now maybe the commissioners want to get into that or not, but I'd say at this time it would be premature, but we don't have the authority just to say, well, a bedroom is this. That's our opinion, and that's all it is. It's not legally enforced.
I guess the question I would ask is if the legal is has a problem with the definition of bedroom, then are we not going to use the word bedroom in the document at all? And how are we going to determine what occupancy is?
We.
We're just going to let them have as many people as they want?
The the planning department gave three other options as to how to regulate that didn't involve bedrooms. That's why we went that route. Because I don't support the idea of regulating a bedroom. So I, we have lots of opportunities.
Does our current application ask how many bedrooms there are?
Yeah, that would be my next question. Does it?
Easy. Yeah. So that's the current code is. Current code, I mean, this wording here, that's not underlined and read, is the existing language, and it says per bedroom. Yeah, so this is the way it's been written. I don't know why we would be changing, and all we're doing is adding a definition as to what
Right.
what we constitute, or what we believe constitutes a bedroom. Again, what what we're doing here is we're making a recommendation to the county commissioners. If they don't like it, they can take it out, but you know, we're going to make a recommendation here. And, you know, I would welcome Bill Wilson's attendance at our meeting so we could talk about it.
I did request that he be here.
And he refused, right?
He does not have the bandwidth to attend the meeting.
He's not.
The PDF of the public services is in the drive now.
Is, is, and again, the alternative is that maybe perhaps it sounds like the majority of the board wants to stay with the bedroom concept, and then the county commissioners make the final decision, which gives, which is appropriate. Or we could consider other alternatives recommended by staff such as was given to us the meeting before, the two other alternatives. But I'm not sure that we gave those adequate consideration. And I don't know if we want to review, or if we just want to go ahead and go through the the study, the formal study sessions with public and and as is and see where it goes. But I I would think maybe another alternative was to say, you know, if you if your house is X number of square feet, you get this many people. If it's bigger, you get this number of people, because we've already discussed, people aren't going to always house people in bedrooms. They'll be in the front room or wherever they can put a cot.
No matter what method you use to to talk about the structure, the the residence, whatever, it still comes down to the same thing. The owner is certifying. This is the house.
Does the county not know where a structure is built, how big it is?
Yes, we do know how large structures are.
Where feet is in the residence?
So both either in planning department or in accessory data, we can.
Based on that number, you could determine how many people would be allowed. And we can say, you know what, if you've got a five thousand square foot home, you're allowed five people. I mean, which we just said is not probably going to happen, but maybe ten feet, but just, and if it's ten thousand feet, you get not necessarily double, but you know, something like that, just something that's easy. And then we don't get ourselves wrapped around the axle.
What could be easier than just saying, you get so many per bedroom? I don't understand why that's difficult. Most people know what a bedroom is.
Yeah. Well, and if they don't know, there's a pretty succinct definition of it.
I have no interest in going back and reviewing the same proposals that we did or the same suggestions that we did last time. And we did that last time. We rejected those, and we came up with this. I think Jake did a great job of drafting what we had all said we would support last time. I don't see any reason to go back. And I would welcome Bill Wilson's attendance at our meeting in the future. Next one we have at the public here was here. I I think that'd be great. Because I'll have a lot of questions for Bill.
Okay, I can invite him again.
And if he just wants to talk to me, I mean, I'd be happy to talk to him, too.
I think you should be speaking.
Well, I do, too. But apparently he has some.
But if he doesn't want to, yes, then we could approach him individually, I suppose.
If it's the same topic, it's best to be to the whole board, right?
I agree. And.
That should be covered.
And we welcome, and I welcome that opportunity.
Okay, so going through the changes as proposed, I still, I still left highlighted the occupancy for twenty people. I don't know what you guys want as the trigger. We're going from a typical short-term rental permit to the high occupancy, high occupancy vacation rental permit. And then if there are some additional standards that you want to add to this, I'm more than welcome to add them. One that I had was services. If we want to get services involved, like within a fire district or something along those lines. When you get to a higher occupancy, we can add something along those lines. Otherwise, we can just leave it as written. I pulled that section from A and put it into the high occupancy, then added that section for four B, which is pulled from or kind of a copy paste from our vacation, or sorry, our administrative variance code. So there's a trigger that allows the planning director just to schedule for a meeting with the hearing examiner for a decision for the zoning commission. And then the other changes that I made since the last meeting was the declaration of compliance to that section eleven. And then the section twelve for inspection. I thought that was a reasonable way to do the inspection clause, so.
But was Bill mentioning that we probably don't have the building doctor go in and inspect the interior of the building now?
So this doesn't say inside of a structure. We could do compliance for, let's say, parking standards to validate a parking plan or validate the signage on the outside of a structure, right? So.
So when someone's initially applying for a nightly rental permit now, when you go out, do you always do a site visit?
Right now, that has been the practice. It's not in the code.
Okay, so it's pretty much your standard practice.
Correct.
You only do exterior?
So I'm just looking at the site.
Or do you go in the house?
Yeah.
Typically, we try to avoid going inside structures.
But you do, but they do.
Yes.
Because they go in and put the permit on the inside.
Correct.
And so when you, when you go in the house, do you just kind of go in and, I I'm not being disrespectful. I'm just wondering what in general you do.
We asked the applicants, you know, what bedrooms do you have? And they say one, two, three bedrooms. Those are the three bedrooms. Right? There's no standard for which they're reviewing what the bedroom is, other than what the homeowner says that this is a bedroom.
Yeah, okay.
Again, Panhandle Health regulates everything based on bedrooms, and they don't have a definition of bedroom either. So it it's inherently difficult. And why I keep bringing up the building code ideas, because we are the only county that are right that is regulating short-term rentals that does not have a building code. Like there are three counties without building codes. It's us, Boundary and Idaho, and Boundary and Idaho County do not have a short-term rental ordinance. So we are the only ones in the state as to who to lean on for ordinance writing. I I don't have other examples other than those with building codes. Which all have the regulation as to what a building should look like, what a bedroom should look like, because they've adopted building codes and fire codes if they get inspected. When you adopt a quasi-building code for this one specific use, it's inherently difficult to regulate.
But we've had the term bedroom in there all along. Has Bill had a problem with that, or is he, it's just never been brought to his attention?
It hasn't been challenged as of yet. It doesn't mean it won't be challenged in the future.
Well, and I think this board has been advocating for greater oversight of rentals throughout the county and in a set of some higher standards and now employ the services of a group to monitor the rentals and become more, I guess, observant of what's going on in the rental business and to make sure that people are not impacting, in my mind, their neighbors. And in that regard, you know, when I look at this occupancy clause here, two persons per bedroom with an additional two persons allowed, up to a total of twenty, I'm thinking twenty is a huge number. So what, you have eight, eight bedrooms, nine bedrooms, which would be eighteen plus two?
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Come on. Yeah, it's a big number.
That that doesn't.
But that's also per lot or parcel, so it could be several residences that combine up to twenty.
But again, if you had enter that you can visually see from the outside, the size of the of the facility, saying, you, you know, it's a thousand square feet, you can have three people in there. Or, you know, occupants of three. If if it's two thousand feet, you can have occupants of eight, et cetera, et cetera, for as many structures as you have with a maximum of X number, because again, you you got five places, you may not have room for thirty cars or thirty cars, but, you know, ten cars.
Sure.
So I'm just trying to make this simpler and not get into a room with the prosecuting attorney. And and I believe the commissioners will be better served if somehow we can get into an agreement so with the attorney, and if that means coming here again, fine. I think it would be a mistake just to plot ahead and do something here that's contrary that we have a difference in opinion. And and then we got to go to a a public hearing. And if the this is prosecutor's recurring to, is that correct?
He works for prosecutor.
Representative stands up and says the things that he said in this letter. It's going to be really problematic and difficult for us, I think, to, in that hearing, to to affirm what we have. I don't personally, I don't, I don't want twenty people.
That's why he's got a comment or something. There you go.
So one of the potential problems I see with this, with using bedrooms, is that most of the vacation rental permits would be issued on the buildings, on the building location permits that have already been issued. For those building location permits, we didn't take into consideration how many bedrooms they had, right? So this, even if we adopt this code now, it's not going to be useful to permit so many vacation rental permits that we are going to have to permit after the implementation of this software. Because people will just tell us, yeah, we have five bedrooms when they have only two, and we'll have to take their word for it, and they will get whatever occupancy they can, they want on it, based, based just on their word. Because for all the building location permits we have issued till now, we never we never recorded the number of bedrooms in those building location permits. It was, so it's, isn't it better to use what we have already been using for, for, for issuing building location permits to use the same standards for vacation rental permits, too?
What's that standard?
It could be the size of the structure. It could be the number of structures on the property.
Why did we have bedrooms in the current ordinance?
Right, that's my, that's what's confusing to me.
It's not really, because because when we did away with the, with the building codes, there was no need to record how many bedrooms you want to have on your property. That it makes no difference in terms of how many structures should be permitted, or how many dwellings need to be permitted on a piece of parcel, right? We we don't regulate it. You can have as big a single-family dwelling as you want. There is no need to record how many bedrooms you have.
I don't know how the current ordinance got drafted. Maybe, Danya, I think you were on PNC at the time, right?
It hasn't been that long ago.
Two thousand and eighteen, yeah.
Yeah, so I I don't know. It was just, it was, I think, it was looking at what other jurisdictions had, and the bedrooms, and then and kind of silently get in beside Panhandle Health, because they use bedrooms. That was the genesis of it, but I mean, here in the discussion now, I'm thinking there may be an avenue to follow with the structure, because I mean, thinking back to the advertisements online, this house is a vacation rental. And I don't, I haven't seen that many where you've got choice of three to have different houses on the properties. Vast majority of them are that residence that either the family lived in before, and I know of one that specifically was built to be a vacation rental on Sagel Road, but otherwise, it's a single-family residence that somebody had, and now they're whatever. So it would seem logical now. So the outlier there is, well, what if the property does have more than one building? One of the one dwelling which could be, but we have to work that in, but if it changed now to just say per dwelling, you know, and then we'd have to 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 monitor it, not, well, not really, that's not the right word. Regulate it. The size of the building, yeah. Uh, the size of the building, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's illogical to say a thousand square foot residents can have twenty people. It doesn't make sense at all.
So historically, we have, we have uh recorded our building location permits with the size of the structure and and the number of
Size of the structure of the footprint.
I'm not entirely sure.
I think it's the footprint, because that's what you're concerned about. You're concerned about setbacks.
It doesn't.
And you're not, you're not, I mean, it could be a ten story building.
Yeah, it could be a
You don't, you don't regulate that. So you don't know how many square feet are in a building. All you know is what the what the footprint is.
So then the other option is to go by the number of structures.
Number what?
The number of structures, number of dwellings on the property, because that's something we have always.
Then either. So so if you have it, if you have a uh a a six thousand square foot house with which a certain footprint, because it's three stories or whatever, uh, what what are you gonna do?
I believe we do, I I believe we do.
We do based on square footage, regardless, in including number of story.
Close, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Not not just the footprint.
Multi, multi story.
Yeah.
It's not just the the area of the footprint. So it's, it takes into account the entire structure. But that's how our fee schedule is based is on the the square footage of the structure.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, usual square footage.
Yeah, but this
You know, I just am having a lot of trouble trying to figure out why it is that we can't ask people to calculate the number of bedrooms they have based upon a definition of what a bedroom is. I mean, they already do that with the current, with the current application. They have to, they have to say, I've got X number of bedrooms. Now we're just saying, well, a bedroom is this. Do you comply with that? And you know, the whole thing about
It's it really just
We taking their word for it. Yes, we take people's word for it all the time on many, many different documents. And many of those documents have the same under penalty of perjury. All that does is tell people, this is serious, you need to be truthful. And most people are, they're truthful. If you, if you, you know, I'm sure Wilson probably wouldn't, wouldn't go after somebody for perjury if they, if they, if they filed a voter registration incorrectly, and that's under penalty of perjury.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's all kinds of documents. When you, when you buy real estate, sometimes you have to buy sign signed stuff under penalty of perjury. It's just not an uncommon thing. And whether or not, you know, the prosecuting attorneys are going to go out and start, you know, filing lawsuits against people and making criminal indictments against people because they perjured themselves. I mean, they perjured themselves in court all the time. And they don't go after them. So um, you know, I I think that, I think we're making way too much of this. Bedroom seems to me to be what kind of the standard is, whether it's because they have building departments or they don't. All we're doing is saying, look, we're going to calculate the occupancy based upon bedrooms, which is consistent with what Panhandle Health does for the sewer systems or the septic systems. Um, it just seems to me that that's, that's the, that is the logical way to go about it. And all we're doing is it's a method of calculation. And if you should, you should be able to 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 do that. And for people to say, you know, for people to say, I I wanna, I wanna I wanna have a vacation rental or a short term rental, whatever we want to call it. And for so many people based upon these criteria, they should be able to say, you know, I I I swear that this is true. It's not a big deal. People do that all the time. So I'm, I'm looking, this is, I got up on the screen, the application for vacation rental. I don't see anywhere in there where it says the applicant is to say how many bedrooms or how many occupants they're they're renting it for. Number of bedrooms, there is right there.
There should be number of bedrooms and then requested occupancy should be on there.
Yeah, I don't see the requested occupancy.
So if somebody says that their living room is a bedroom, should they be able to?
It's got the pullout couch, you know, in the living room, so.
Because if 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 our definition of bedroom is so basic that any room in the house can meet the definition of the bedroom, then they can potentially have exceed the occupancy that they should ideally be permitted.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't think any room in the house is going to meet that definition. Most living rooms don't have four walls with one door.
If we have, if we, if our, if our definition is so loose of bedroom, then it's very likely to, it's easily, it's, it can easily be uh
Do you think that, do you think the definition that was proposed by, that was put in there today is a loose definition?
It really depends on the user. Users find ways to
Right there, a room containing four walls, a door and an egress window.
What if it has two doors? Is it not a bedroom?
Oh, Mike.
Well, no, really, no, I mean, there's a lot of bedrooms. My bedroom has, I don't want to get personal, but it has two doors.
Well, generally, these are the loopholes that people tend to find and use. And they will.
Well, I I guess I'm basically, I'm really confused that the word bedroom has been in this probably since its inception, which I don't know when that was.
Two thousand eight.
Nobody's had a problem with it. It's it's base it's basically how you guys have determined occupancy on permits. And now, all of a sudden, because we actually made it easier for the property owner to know what you mean by bedroom by defining it, now, all of a sudden, it's a legal problem. I I'm not following that.
Because it hasn't been enforced.
Well
And this whole thing started
Yeah, with enforcement. When you go back a year ago, or whenever we started on this journey, uh, we realized, which I thought was astute by this board, there was really the the vacation rentals weren't really being monitored at all. And in fact, there was only thirty percent of the uh rentals in compliance. So we, as a board, recommended commissioners that we have a more reasonable way to protect the communities uh of uh near rentals. So we went through our journey and have now employed a uh oversight agency uh to work. So so we'll know where they all are. And we're just trying to set some general parameters to how many people are allowed in that unit. And and I think we've discussed bedrooms, we've discussed bathrooms, we've discussed number of things and whatever we end up with, uh, we'll have something and eventually it'll go to the commissioners for them to vote on.
Well, I guess if Bill was in the room, I would also ask him the question. If you're hesitant about the definition of bedroom being in here, because you're saying you can't legally enforce it, what else in here can he not legally enforce? Can he not legally enforce parking violations? If he's not willing to enforce this, is he willing to enforce the parking violations? What if somebody has twenty five people in the place? Is he willing to prosecute that?
I
I I so to me, there's just so much incre- it's just so incongruous what he's stated. I wish he was here for us to talk to him about it tonight because he's made a major statement with that I'm not an attorney. But I know one and and this, this to me doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
If if again, I think the the board, this board recognized that in earlier discussions about enforcement. And I thought it was quite uh novel and um a good solution to say, you're just not going to get a permit the next time. If you're not in compliance. Uh, I don't think the this county has the resources, or the league department has the resources to start pursuing six hundred rental units that may or may not be in compliance with with whatever we've written in here. You have to have something here that is manageable and practical and easily understood. And then enforce it. But if you have something that isn't enforceable because it's, it can't be seen or decided, and then you're asking the prosecutor to spend time and resources, taxpayers' money to prosecute people, I think that's the wrong approach. The right approach was made by this board to say, look, you're not in compliance according to the planning department, we're not issuing you a permit. Now, if you want to argue that, you can sue us. And we'll defend ourselves.
Well, there's, you know, there's, there's so many different levels to this. So enforcement initially was uh primarily looking at the lack of enforcement with regard to permits. And that's going to be the focus of Deckard and would have been the focus of any of those companies. Not necessarily how many bedrooms you have.
Right.
And we're not going to, you know, I mean, I I don't think anybody has suggested that we're gonna you know, make the planning department go out and check every bedroom, uh, check every, every rental. We want people to say, look, this is how many bedrooms we have. We will certify that this is what, how many bedrooms we have in accordance with this definition. And that's, that's how they're going to calculate occupancy. Nobody's going to go out and 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 take them to court because they've got three bedrooms rather than four. It's a way of calculating the number of occupants. Just like the 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 parking is, and the parking is just as important as the bedrooms. I mean, the parking is probably even more important.
It's, it's been absorbed some more complaints.
Exactly. So you know, that it's, it's the parking, the parking is going to modify the number of occupants because there's only so many vehicles that you can park off street. So
Well, according to what?
Right, where you live, yes. Um, where I live, heck no, nobody go ten acres. My goodness, you can we've seen it. Well, then, that's, then you need a different, you know, occupancy level. Well, but yeah, but yeah, if there's not a parking issue, then there's not a parking issue. But you know, with a lot of vacation rentals, the short terminals, parking is going to be an issue.
And it has been. That's like I said, those are the ones that can hear about.
If the application had, right now, it says the things that the applicant has to fill out, number of off street parking spaces provided, blank, number of bedrooms, blank. And then other things. What if it also said um, requested occupancy?
I think that's what Jake did today.
And then because down below, you know, the, below the line, here's the stuff that the county then fills out when it's approved. Decision date, expiration date, renewal date, maximum occupancy and minimum number of vehicles. I don't know why it said minimum.
Should say maximum.
Yeah, I hope so.
Get that updated.
Oh, anyway, so it's, it boils down to that, those two things up here. And there's where the equation comes in, because it says number of bedrooms and down here, it's maximum occupancy. That's the equation.
Right.
So what if they were to say upfront? Okay, we're going to rent it for up to ten ten people. And and again, looking at a number of these things online, that's exactly what they portray online. This can house ten people. This can house four people. And and then they show the bedrooms and they show pictures usually. There's a bedroom and it's got a double bed, it's got a single bed, it's got one bed and a and a clock in that room. So that's how they they make the equation, and that's going to be the basis of their saying, therefore, we want to have it rented for ten people. What if that was, would that help us?
Well, I think, I think that's, that's, should be part of the application.
You know, I, I, they're asking for it.
Yeah, I would expect it to be.
It should be, you know, they could be asking for more than than what now, it it takes occupancy support. You've already got the certification statement here. I hereby certify all information, blah, blah, blah is is you know, best of my knowledge. So it's there already.
Penalty of perjury though.
Well, it doesn't say so, but you know, I mean, you're certifying, you could add that under penalty of perjury, I certify.
Yeah, I think you should add that.
Yeah. And so, you know, he's talking about a misdemeanor versus a I I don't know, that's, that's I'm not an attorney.
One of the changes we made to the application contents is going from maximum occupancy permitted to maximum occupancy requested. So that's under B one D.
Oh.
And that's, that's in response to a number of sewer districts charging short term rentals by the, by the occupant. So there's been some changes and then a number of short term rental um lend or property owners have come in and requested to lower down their maximum occupancy. So we've, we've reduced it upon request.
So therefore, that line needs to be added to the application.
Correct. So it's, right now, it's just, it's a red line in our document to be changed. So it's
Good. Well, I think that would do it. To me, I yeah, it seems to me that we can go around and around on this. Maybe we did this, this was a rehash of our last meeting, but um I I I would suggest that we move forward with the draft as as set forth uh by Jake with with the definitions as set forth. And set it for a public comment session. I don't know if we need a motion to do that or not.
Not necessarily. We can just add it to the agenda as a workshop, um, open for public uh discretion. So we are, is the um, the board in agreement or the the commission in agreement on the twenty twenty persons as the trigger for the occupancy uh for the typical short term rental or vacation rental versus the high occupancy. And then are there any additional standards you want to add to the high occupancy vacation rental permit?
I think uh I I agree with the chair uh that this is a a working document. Uh, we, we can go through this and wordsmith it and change this and change that. What really is going to matter is to bring it to for public discussion or study session and go through the process and and learn from that process what the best outcome and recommendation will be to county commissioners at some future date. We need not sit here and keep rehashing this and trying to make it perfect because it is going to change. I I can almost guarantee that I don't think it comes out first time and and it's perfect.
Uh, sure, but I only ask because our typical format is we workshop it till you get to a draft that everyone agrees on. From there, you go to a public comment period, and then we put it in for a a text amendment.
That
So
Majority we use on
Correct.
On its board.
Yep.
So if it's five, two, it still goes forward. Right?
Right. So um, with regard to the twenty persons, um you know, that's kind of the number you came up with.
Well, it was, was, that's what's in the current ordinance is twenty, and then you
I think we were just looking for a a dividing line between what's high occupancy and what's, yeah, what's not. I mean, it's not, we're not saying here that you can have twenty people. We're saying that up to twenty people, as long as you're in compliance with all the other criteria.
Right. And then after twenty people, it just has two more standards that have to be met. So there's no limit as to the total maximum occupancy.
As long as it's approved by you.
Right. I mean, and anything that's approved by staff should be a black and white. Um, it would not really up for any kind of interpretation.
So, right.
That's why there's that trigger for so the four A in this, in this case is kind of discretionary. And then B then says, okay, if the planning director says based on this, there's, it's too gray. I don't see it meeting the standard or the impact is too great, then you can schedule it for a public meeting for a decision.
All right, so um is that certification under penalty of perjury, is that in there?
So there's a declaration of compliance, which is already what we have kind of in the bottom, right?
At the, at the, on the
Shall submit an affidavit affirming compliance with county standards.
Affidavit? Well, affidavit is under penalty of perjury. That's what an affidavit is.
However you want to word it, that
Um, affidavit is fine.
Okay.
It's affidavit, my definition is under penalty of perjury. So the application would have to say that. The application would, but the application had to be rewritten anyway. Yeah, it was this gets, once this gets uh uh approved by the, any adjustments because of the coaching.
Right.
We reflected in the application.
Right.
All right, so we had agreement that we should move this to a public hearing?
As it stands right now?
Right.
You want to do a public workshop or do you want to?
Public, we're, public workshop, workshop, so we can, yeah.
And
More like that.
We, we did discuss the idea of having like a two week buffer time that someone could have a short term rental for two weeks and not require a permit. I just real, I just remembered that as I was standing here and I didn't add it to the code. If you like, I can add it.
I mean, for like a special event or something.
Right. Um, they call it the Iron Man clause in the, in the city of Coeur d'Alene's. Um, so you have two weeks that you could, and now we have software, we can see when it's being listed. So we can see when that two weeks has been broken.
Two weeks per month, per year?
Per, per year is the, it's the way that Coeur d'Alene's code is written. We don't have to adopt that. It was just an idea to give like a buffer time. So that if someone listens, we can send them a letter saying, hey, it looks like you're listing a vacation rental. Please apply for a permit.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you put that in there and then we'll include that in what's going to be workshopped.
Okay.
Okay.
So stick with the twenty people, add the two week clause.
Right. So when would this come up?
So we'll do a public workshop on it, and if there's any additional changes after that, uh, then we'll make them in that meeting. So in two weeks. And then after that, we would um run it as an application or uh, yes, and then it would be like a month after that. So usually it's you know, you have to get noticing out. So it'll probably be the second meeting and You know, you have to get noticing out, so it'll probably be the second meeting in. November.
And this should be clear, it'll come in just black and white with no. Strikes or anything like that, it will just be.
Well, maybe both.
The clean version.
I typically do two version, I do a red line version to be very clear as to what's being changed into a, a black and white ordinance version. That shows this is the new ordinance.
Sure.
So that's gonna be the seventeenth, the workshop?
The workshop will be on the seventeenth and I believe, we'll have to look at the noticing requirements, but we'll see if we can get it either. They won't be able to make it on the seventh, so it would be the twenty-first of November, then go to the board. Probably mid-December.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anytime, once we get to a final version of this, it, it takes a while, right? And I, I had a meeting with Deckard earlier today and we're implementing the software and I gave them a lot of. But the ordinance is being changed, so like here's what we currently have, just be aware that we're drafting new ordinance and. So once we have a final draft version and, and it's approved by the board, I'll hand it off to them, it doesn't look like we're gonna go live. I, I don't want to go live until we have an ordinance figured out, but I don't want to. You know, create all of our online, um, forums and everything, just to have to turn around and modify them all, so. We'll probably go live by mid-December around the same time this, this ordinance gets adopted.
Alright.
Okay.
So the next, uh, is the discussion of the components. Natural resources. We've kind of gone through this. A lot. Do we have, uh, those other two chap, no? Swatty.
She, she had a small subdivision file she was working on.
Alright, so, um.
Natural resource right now, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
We're gonna, we'll build a natural resource versus that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I only had, uh, I mean, I, I think, you know, what we have, a one, two, chapters one, two and five, look good. Except, uh, I, I thought that we needed to have something. Under uses of wetlands. To kind of support the code that we have. By the way, it's a setback twenty feet or forty feet? Okay.
Which chapter are we on, Mr. Chairman?
Natural resources, uh, chapter one point three, section one point three. So at the end of, at the end of that second paragraph, Swatty. Uh, I, I kind of wanted to add, I don't know if you've got it there, I. I said to the extent of county jurisdiction inconsistent with the Clean Water Act, delineated wetlands should be protected. I put that.
Are you on the most recent?
Where, yeah, which?
Version eleven?
There's a lot of.
Version eleven.
Yeah, version eleven.
Okay.
I, I saw it earlier today on this version, but I'm not.
Which one did you go to?
Well.
If you go, if you go to the, uh, to agenda.
Chapter are you looking at, Alan?
Yeah, one point three.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm, there it is, and Scott Matt's comment from ten twenty-seven this morning. Yeah, go to, go to, go to the, uh, agenda.
I don't see Matt's, oh, there's, so there's Alan's comment.
Go to ten three.
Don, where's Matt's comment?
Now go to eleven? Is that the same one I just had? One point three wetlands. But it's this. Okay, if you.
Yeah, it's on the screen also.
Natural. Yeah, that's right.
Just one sentence.
It's just not one sentence, I still can't find it. It's up there.
Yeah, it's on there, I kind of bring it up.
So I, I didn't, you know, I, I don't know, protected is pretty nebulous, but I, I know you want to say something more than that. Should be preserved, should be something.
Well, protected. Protected implies by what? And then we're talking, the, the protection is setbacks.
Right.
So, but preserved is a whole different kettle of fish.
Okay. And then I, I said consistent with the Clean Water Act, so. You know, I was thinking about putting in there unless, you know, there's a permit from the Army Corps for, for some of the habits. I said consistent with the Clean Water Act would incorporate that.
Yes.
Should.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, that's my suggestion, just so that we then have something that supports our, you know, our setbacks in the code. Other than that, I think, uh, these chapters are ready to go, we just need the other two. At some point.
Yeah, but with this implementation of this, we may have to go ahead and.
Yes, well, yeah, we don't know, so we've got to.
Two, twelve point, twelve dash seven thirty-three. My opinion.
I, I'm sorry, where are you, where are you?
Well, in, in light of your, that comment you have at one point three.
Yeah.
I think we also have to add. Pretty much that same type of language in twelve dash seven thirty-three. Of our ordinance.
Well, that's the ordinance.
That's the ordinance, so.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, it's a secondary necessary motion, but.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, I think we, we, that, that may be true, but we're not dealing with the ordinance right now. I just wanted to have something in there that, that, that supported, uh, the setback requirements we have. And any other, you know, uh, code. That we have to. Protect weapons. Alright, so unless there's some other comments on natural resources. Um, let's go to the public services.
Can I just ask real quick, supposedly Matt made a comment that I haven't seen or?
Oh, it's just the very, very, very last page, it's in the appendix.
Oh, okay, I thought it was under the wetlands, oh, I see, the one that says IDL?
Yeah, and see.
Okay.
Cause I know department lands, they don't distinguish between a gravel pit or a rock quarry or mine, they all require, they refer to as a mining reclamation. They can serve them all mines.
Right.
I can change this map to just say mines, that's what he was.
That, that's where I was getting out the ground itself, yeah, the burrow pits, those are different, those, you don't have to have a. Reclamation plan on a lot of those burrow pits, because they're under than so many square feet.
Yeah.
Um. But also some kind of language perhaps, if this map's not all inclusive, because I know. Uh, at least two mines. Down the southwest portion of the county that are not shown on this map.
Okay, yes.
They're open.
Yeah, it's, it's not all inclusive. It's, it's from twenty sixteen data that I found on the.
Yeah.
USGS.
Thank you.
So, uh, on, on public services, do we, we have the, uh, PDF? Cause I'm still getting the same. Couldn't preview the files, too large.
Sorry, we don't have natural resources.
Yes.
There's a PDF right there that Jake put in. That one's still too big, it's much smaller than he does. It's, it's, it's version three, but, okay.
Three and three or four? Oh, the PDF, three. Oh, it's, oh, yeah, there it is.
Okay. Oh. Well, I know, maybe we'll talk about when you get there. Yeah.
I put the maps in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Version three.
Version three.
What's that?
Does version three have all the changes?
Correct.
Yep, just to be, yeah.
So I, I created version four just so I can track the changes that we make tonight and delete comments and whatnot. So it'll be for.
I thought, I thought the public services component is pretty darn good, I, I.
So there's a number of questions and so format wise, I copied the really good housing component. And got some, like, I learned how to do tables of figures and. Our list of figures, list of tables, Swatty did a really good job on that component. Yeah, yeah, and so we're, we're waiting on a second table, so right now we have a ta, table one, which is a private water supplies. We need table two, which is gonna be, um. PhD is working on a list of, uh, subsurface like shared sewer systems, I think that's what. Um, if you want to add it and have it in the component, I think it's beneficial. Um, just with the mindset or the understanding that. It's out of date as soon as we get it, right, because they're permitting new stuff each month. So. So I reached out to DEQ for that, that list, who told me to reach out to PhD, who turned around and told me to reach back out to DEQ, so. I'm not sure, like, who has that data and I will continue to email and request it. Um, the water supplies, so the only updates from my last brief, uh, kind of. Review of this with you guys two weeks ago is, I went through and made all of the appendix into one appendix and bunch of figures, so I updated all the. All the references to the different figures with all the hyperlinks that go throughout, so, um. So your private water suppliers are figures one through twenty-four of each map. Um. As far as power plants and utilities. So I tried to keep some stuff or most of it and track changes, so I, the, this is in chapter three. As we're going through, um. I condensed down and took out location and just made it into a single, uh, line for both of the different hy, uh, hydroelectric dams. The power companies, we requested maps and then Mr. Lynn Scott was able to gather up. Two or three different figures for maps, we still haven't gotten a map from. Um, Avista, who claims, if I remember right, that they don't have a map.
Yeah.
That with, with enough money that anybody can get power anywhere, so.
Yeah.
Um, but that is, but, uh, figures forty-three and forty-four, I believe, are forty-two, forty-three. Show the different coverage maps for the, um. For both, uh, inland power and northern lights, so in both of those are bigger than what the county has. If, if we can get GIS data, I, I'll, I'll get it and we can map just the county like I have the other. Uh, information, but right now this is what we got, so if I get updated or if I can gather up updated, I will. Any other questions on chapters one, two or three so far? The text itself is actually pretty brief.
Okay.
Um. Chapter four for fire, so. We have, um, figures, uh, twenty-five through thirty-seven, which are each one of the fire districts and they're mapped. Um. And then the public lands and fire protection is figure thirty-eight. Do we want to maintain the, the verbiage of how, of, of the different protection areas? So that's the comment I left in there is with the addition of the map, is this section needed or should it be removed?
You know, I, for myself, I think we should remove it because some of those boundaries. Uh, the circle part, we got ahead and had a recourse and. Expart, part of a little block tail area.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we have done that, so they're, they're open to, to change. Uh.
The annexation process.
Yeah, and so I, I think it's gonna be fine if we get rid of that, but the fact is. One of those descriptions may or may not. Be exactly that sort of coverage area and that's what happened in the appendix in my own concern.
And I haven't updated this verbiage, this is copy paste from the current adopted plan, so I. I, I wanted to get your input before I sought a bunch of data and tried to update the.
Which language are we talking about exactly?
So it's in, uh, section four point two, so under chapter four. Um, I have it highlighted with a comment on it.
Yep. Well, that's, but. Are these, um, public fire protection agencies, they're not likely to change, are they?
They do change because they have cross. So if we go to figure thirty-eight, this actually details it pretty good. So these are the different fire coverage areas, so IDL protection districts, there are. Four, there's a little tiny bit of MICA. Um, mostly there's two main ones and then two really small versions or, or areas. And then each one of the different green and brown overlays there are different agreements that they have that do adjust on occasion, so.
Yeah, alright, why don't you take those out then?
To find my way back to fourth point two. So we could state in there that, you know, the Forest District has these, these three boundaries or these three areas. And then the Idaho Department of Lands has these two and see the map for, for the detail or something along those lines, rather than.
That was good.
Okay, I can make that change.
I did have a question for once, we, if we're down with four point two.
Sure.
Or says, not all the reason bar and kind of located with a fire issue, area outside, should be playing from low density. When we look at all those, when we say fire ditch, are we referring to strictly? Tax, well, they're all taxing histories, IDL tax. Hmm, on my bill, that is a tax.
Yeah.
Yes, so. If you're.
I was, I was envisioning.
So that, like, out here, on, on Marvade, that's outside. Single fires, right, but it's, it's, but IDL, they, they submit that tax.
Yeah.
Right. So, so when we, when we, when we're gonna reference this. Within a fire district, are we including? IDL.
Yeah.
I don't.
Fire district.
I, I wasn't, and that's not how our zoning code is written, and when you, when you talk about a fire district, you're talking about a local. Fire district, not a fire protection area of IDL. I, I don't think I've had that argument before. To justify a higher density zone, it's always been, you know, this is within the single fire district or within.
Right, yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying, when it says within a fire district.
Mm-hmm.
Is that property there, not with any. That, that's covered by, I, yeah, covered by IDL.
So we could.
That is a district.
We could put a line in there, you know, not to include public, what is it, we call it, public lands covered under. Or sorry, lands covered under public. Fire protection districts or something like that, specify. Or we can say per section four point one.
I think, just do a shorter. A shorter version.
We say. Not all areas within Vona County are located within a fire district, as noted in section four point one or something like that.
Right, yeah. Right.
We can word spent that a little bit.
I, I don't know why I'm troubled by it, I have no, uh. Answer, uh, the second sentence, areas outside of the fire district should be retained for lower density residential uses. Seems like to me they shouldn't be. Uh, even encouraged. Shouldn't be prohibited, but. It, what, where it says should be retained, I guess the idea is, we don't want high density, obviously.
I think, I think this change came right from you guys two meetings back.
Huh?
I think this change came right from some comment during the review two.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I just, if, you know, I'm not gonna hold up. The evening with that, it's just, something doesn't. Click with me there, but it's probably my issue.
So we could say it should be utilized for low density.
I, I don't know, that big of a deal, um, it seems. Could just say, not all areas bar kind of work here within fire district, dense. Determination of density, that should be taken into consideration for density. I don't know. Or something, you know, should be aware. So that citizens should, or. Uh, and. Or at their own risk or something, I don't know.
Yeah. The, um. Yeah, I think utilize is probably, should be utilized for low floor density residential uses. Not sure what retain means there.
Yeah, I get it, that's the word, I guess.
Just thinking of the other uses within. Like areas outside of fire districts on the use table, if we're looking at the forest forty districts, right? Uh, what are, what other uses do we allow there other than residential, I'm sure there's a number.
Well, and I get, you know, some will say, I get some of, all the times, they handle something. Next door, ordering or very close to force service. All I want is just a couple, like, fifteen, five acres, pull my camper in and go hunt, fall.
Yeah.
So it's not necessary for town residential. I don't know. Don gave it a different word, or someone gave a different word about, uh, retain, a different word than we.
Utilized?
Yeah, I know, utilized, just utilized. Retain means something different, I think.
Maybe utilize, only for. Or no, you can't say only because that, that would be. Why don't we try utilizing and then you can move forward?
Okay.
That's good. So drainage.
So I updated and added that that first paragraph. Um, and that next line over. We had talked about more or less deleting the remainder of that that section saying that we have an ordinance and. Um, you wanted me to come up with a single. Like paragraph response. So this is if this works, great. If you want me to add additional, I can. I. I just stated that the stormwater ordinance is there and then I copy pasted the purpose of that from the from section seven point I think three or seven point two.
Yeah, I thought the section was was fine.
Okay, so get rid of the remainder of it.
Sure. We struck the yeah. What are you striking?
Anything that says in the earlier nineteen nineties and down.
Oh, yeah. Well, wouldn't then you then you need to take out the whole. The the next couple paragraphs can't die.
Everything after in the early nineteen nineties. So just leave that first paragraph. That I have the. The note on. So the first paragraph and the next line that says there there's no drainage. There are no drainage districts located in unincorporated Bonner County. And then leave that as the the last line in that chapter.
Perfect.
Okay. That's what we talked about last time. I'm fine if you guys want me to do a full review of the stormwater ordinance and update the data that's in here. Um, but I think last time. You didn't think you didn't think it was necessary.
Okay, six point one.
So. I got some comments from uh EMS. And then there's an updated map and table thirty. Oh, it says table. It should say figure thirty nine.
So you've got some comments from the internet or they incorporated in here or?
Yep. So that's that's where the. All of the information after Bonner County EMS came from.
Oh, see table thirty nine.
Mm hmm. And then it says the.
Yeah.
You know, there's some cut subcontracts with a variety of emergency service providers to include and it has those lists and then. Talk about the future expansion that other paragraph. Then there's that the figure that just shows the different coverage areas. These aren't. So there's one taxing district and that's what's interesting here is the EMS has a single Bonner County EMS taxing district and then they have. Excuse me, different coverage areas. So did um G I S had that mapped and they were able to create a an exhibit for me or a a figure for me. Um, that I included as uh. As a map. So that's what that's what this is here is Bonner County. Um, EMS. You know, the zones, if you want to call it that, they're not really taxing districts, but they're just different coverage zones.
They aren't. They aren't. I thought I thought I. Had that on my tax bill.
It's one single tax. So Bonner County EMS is a taxing district. And then these different zones get different proportions of that tax divided up to those those areas. From what I understand. I I have a very elementary knowledge of this based on just a couple of conversations with EMS on how the taxation works.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then.
Libraries.
I think we drafted these code changes together for libraries.
Uh, the 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 address of the Free Street River Library is wrong.
I'll make a note to update it.
It's on it's on Main Street.
Yeah.
No, it's not. It's different. Yeah, it's in the first block.
I'll I'll find out what the address isn't updated.
Yeah, I had it written down, but I was on the version that I downloaded.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know where that is.
I know where it's.
Yeah, but it's definitely it's on Main Street. I know that, so.
And then chapter eight, I updated. It should say figure forty one, not table forty one. So. This was updated with the list of.
One eighteen Main Street. One eighteen. There you go.
Did it move?
Probably was. It's a new building. Well. It's an old building. Are we on chapter eight now?
Yep. So this is the list from our solid waste department and then the future plans came right from them. Um, as to what's being, you know, worked on or what is their current plan for? Um, expansion of the existing facilities. They don't have any. New facilities or new locations that they're planning on adding anytime in the near future. Or any like landfills. I know it's been brought up a couple of kinds in discussion, but it doesn't sound like it's gonna happen anytime. At least it's not on their docket.
I wonder what happens. Isn't that why they ran that? Alex.
I don't know.
That's surprising to me to look at some of them and see what they said they were going to do with them.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not on there.
Hmm. Are you surprised?
Actually, yes, I am.
That's fine. Figure forty one includes like a a map of all their different locations as they currently stand. So. Their G I S was able to map it for me.
Not that it really matters. I'm I'm not bringing it up anyway. This is one of my pet peeves.
Okay.
Transfer station eight point one. Coburn located at two thirty two Pine Cone Road. Sandpoint, Idaho. No, it's not. That's the mailing address. If somebody used to try to find two thirty two Pine Cone Road in Sandpoint, they'd be lost.
Okay.
I don't know how else to say it. Um. Well, it's two thirty. That is their mailing address because their mail comes through the Sandpoint post.
Where is it?
Fourteen miles north of Sand.
The address.
Two thirty two Pine Cone Road.
No, he wants to know the actual address.
It's not a center point. It's not in the city of Sandpoint. What's? That's the mailing app. Bonner County. Yeah, but.
But that's the zip code.
We're stuck with this with the post office designation of all our areas. Yeah, you go highway ninety five thirteen miles and you go right on Coburn Coburn Road and the first right. There's a there's.
Just put that in there.
Yeah. You could call it. You can call it.
What is that? Right. It's not over.
The the Upland Drive site's not in Sandpoint, but it has a Sandpoint address. The Duford site's not in Sandpoint.
I don't really be gonna be concerned though. Because that's the post office.
That's the post office. Yes.
If somebody.
Right.
Yeah, but my my address is Nordman. I don't live in Norton because that's where the. So according to the G I S viewer. Yeah, right. Over and over it is called.
I do that.
It is. It is.
Fathered by is that it's not in Sandpoint.
Right. It's a cool. I mean, there's no other way. Looks according to G I S is two three two pine.
He's he's upset for Sandpoint.
I just, I mean, I'd like to wipe Sandpoint off of there.
Yeah, just say. It sounds like it sounds like you have a fight to pick with.
I know.
A federal agency. Good luck.
Cause they just go with mailing address.
That this little city I used to work for was incorporated and it didn't have its own zip code. So we were under. The bigger city next to us and everyone thought we were just part of that city and said, no, 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 we're our own city incorporated with our own government.
You go to. Of Sandpoint in Ponray Idaho.
Yeah.
What? I mean, why are people so hesitant to say where they live? Ponray Sandpoint is. Yeah. So mile post eleven. Highway fifty seven. It's not.
If you like, I can I can draft some some directions.
What?
That can still listen with its clothes.
Mile post eleven. Yeah, right. It's not.
This one here?
Okay, forget that. Let's go on. But I actually that one should be deleted. Is that did that show up on their? List. Jake.
Does Hannah Flats still got one out there?
I I got this list right from uh from the uh solid waste department, so.
Hannah Flats is closed.
Not reopening.
If you just pull up a list, it's all list. All right. Yeah, I would check those because I'm not sure those some of those.
Okay, I will send an email back off to him.
I've never heard of Green.
Greeno Waste Disposal Site.
Where is that? Is that the new?
Eastern.
Is the one in Lake Cleveland listed on there, the new one?
Yep. Oh, there it is. Right there, Lake Cleveland site.
Yeah, that's open.
Located at the corner of.
Now, see, this is Lake Cleveland, Idaho. There is no such place as Lake Cleveland, Idaho. It's a post office. But it's it. Okay, they have a post office. It's a branch of Sandpoint, just like Sagal is a branch of Sandpoint. It's like Car- Carrie was. Oh. When I moved to Bonner County in nineteen ninety four. I went up to Ponray. Yeah, it is. Bonner County, okay, public schools.
Thank thank you.
We've done that. I hope we've done that. Go see the component.
I have a note in there to update with the Lake Ponray School District. I do have some data I need to update that component.
Or school component.
Yeah, I I have not done that. I I'll I'll do it before.
I thought we were just gonna refer to the public schools facility component. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Yep, that's the way it's written. If that's what you want.
Yeah, I think that's all we need to do. More information. That's the way. Say component, not section. Component. Component of the comprehensive.
Okay.
You know, I bet you someone have a comment when we get to that. That was gonna bring up this issue about. These these sites not being in Sandpoint.
Oh, that they're not.
Some guy with a hood over his head is gonna show up in the back room and say this doesn't say boy. And it sound a lot. All right, um.
Then the public safety was updated with a with Bob Howard, who's the director of emergency management, so.
So we're assuming.
And I need to, uh, that's my big next task is to update the bibliography. So.
I will. What? Update the bibliography. That'll be current.
It's yeah, there's there's a lot of data and a lot of stuff in there.
Wow, gotta get there. So are we uh in a position to to have this set for a? Public workshop next time?
We can. So the only. Yep, we can. So here's the latest additions was as of today. These are the maps. So this is the best data we could find as far as coverage areas for inland power. Scroll down computer and northern lights coverage area. So again, these are far outside of. You know, the yeah, Bonner County, but that's that's what we were able to find. So if you don't want to include those and just reference. That there is coverage areas, great. If you want to use these, we can. So I'm fine either way.
What do you wanna do? Makes no difference to me. Yeah, it really, I mean, they're basically inconsequential anyway.
Yep.
They really are. Those lines don't mean a thing for land development. You find out who you're. All right. So let's uh let's set this for a public uh workshop on the seventeenth.
Okay, so we are meeting with P H D to discuss this same item on that night. So I'll give her. I'll give her this draft after I ma- make some of the changes from my markups tonight. And then she can be prepared to answer any additional questions and we can open up for public comments as well.
All right. So then hopefully we'll also have um. So next meeting we'll have uh hopefully the final. Workshop. On natural resources before we go to a public workshop, right, Swy?
Natural resources on the seventeen.
And we have those next two chapters. So that we can then move this thing forward.
We don't have the ability to prosecute you, but whatever.
She will be changed. All right, so um. That will be. I think we need to, I think uh everybody should review the land use. Section um or component. So that we can have a discussion of that next time as well. Well, gotta get it going.
Don, do you want me to send your letter out to everybody?
Um, yeah, let's start it. Yeah, Don had a. I can. He had some thoughts on uh planning, so. Yeah, you want to send those out?
Sure. And I I'm gonna take that as as well over to G I S and see how much of that data can we crunch ourselves. So Don has some ideas on how to. How to look at future planning for densities and with the available services that that are out there in the county. So. Um, him and I talked a little bit on how to, when we're going to update the. The comprehensive plan map, like what's the more scientific approach to do that based on the services available in the county? So. Um, it's a decent approach and and looking at. At previous development, previous land divisions, previous building location permits and take all to the. The trajectory of different different areas into account. So if we're seeing growth patterns. At a certain percentage, you know, can services handle that yay or nay? And then, you know, use that to map out or did I capture that right?
Yeah, very much. I mean, it's just, I think that makes the equation. And and we can at least hopefully somewhat justify citing an area for density. When we, once we get the descriptions, line just descriptions down, where do we apply? How do we find? Broad brush, paint brush, that area, that area. No, why not analyze it as then we can with available data? So. Yeah, I think that's uh. Good, good for that. Uh, also. Uh, I'd like to see um the land use, if we have one, the land use map. Just prior to the one we have.
Oh, so two maps ago? I will look. I have a paper document.
Maybe not, maybe not. I think everything was five acres, right? We. From the seventies it was. Well, even even through nine up until ninety six. And I have that now. But yeah, like for instance, everything rolls fives. Everything egg was tens. We didn't have an egg twenty thousand, two thousand. So I I guess what I'm getting at is we we've seen a couple of files. Where a lot of the properties were five acres, even though it was like egg ten or egg twenty. Um, I'd like to be able to identify those. Areas where there's a lot of five acre parcels. Um, that are no egg. Forest. No, rural residential. So. Uh, and I don't know how to do that without. Going to each parcel and checking, see what's what the acreage is. Is there an easy way to do that? Well.
So we do have a list of parcels and their acreages.
Okay, can you share that with us? Got the, well, yeah, we we saw it during the housing phone. But it is the base. That's that's what spurred my thought about this other analysis method. Because we did that. We see that we've got the data there. We can break it down any which way. But then.
What format is it?
We had it in a spreadsheet, I think. Yeah, oh, the G I S would be a lot more helpful than a spreadsheet. Well, we can see where the word is. And you can kind of see.
Right.
Look at today's G N that G N S G I S. To see where those areas are. Zone egg ten was just saying, for instance, but it's litter with fives. Yes, and we can kind of, we can kind of tell even by that. And then I'll bring that other map I have as well. I can probably scan that and email to everybody. It's. Maps are there. Yeah. Yeah. All right. So obviously, we're gonna have a lot of work to do on land use map and the and the component itself. But let's uh let's 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 review the the component. For next time. There's a lot of stuff in there that. I think is is not necessary. Um, so. Very reading. I think we take the first cut through it. Uh, maybe at the next meeting um to just eliminate the stuff that we don't think is is needs to be there. Then we can start working on the stuff that should be in there.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, uh, so we've.
I keep looking at the time. I'm like, there's no way it's six oh three.
Yeah, it is. So you want to drag this out a little?
No, no, I'm totally fine with.
No, no.
It's light outside. Good.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, all right. Uh, well, that's because you guys did such a good job on the vacation.
Oh, I'm sure.
Um. All right, so uh, they will then be adjourned until October seventeen.
Any other updates or?
Any?
Uh, no, I think I covered everything at the beginning, so. Um, if you want, I can, on the seventeenth, we can show you guys uh, what the software looks like for short term rentals if you want.
Yeah.
It it's or we can wait because it's gonna take them a good month to uh, to identify properties. So right now it's. There's not a whole lot.
Wait until.
Okay, I'll I'll give you guys maybe the beginning of November, we can go through uh, like a review of what the software looks like.
Uh, all right, so we will stand adjourned until October seventeenth at uh, four thirty, fifteen hundred highway two.